Good evening and welcome to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I am Mayor Michelle Disler. I'll be chairing this meeting. All members of the governing body are participating remotely. I will do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Thomas?
Present. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Kimbley?
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Larson-Benau?
Present.
Councilmember Nappin?
Present.
Councilmember Comstance?
Present.
Councilmember Chalphy?
Present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to go over some ground rules. I want to make sure that all remote participants keep their devices muted until I ask for comments. We'll attempt to use the raise hand feature in Zoom so I can recognize you. Just like always, I'll ask for motions on each item. Please raise your hand and wait to be called on before starting stating the motion so we can get an accurate record of the minutes. Next, I'd like to go over some emergency procedures. Due to the COVID-nineteen situation, we're taking action to minimize attendance at the City of Shawnee City Council meeting. We're asking our residents to stay home, especially if attendance is not essential, and listen to the broadcast of the meeting from our website, www.cityofshawnee.org. All governing meetings will comply with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. During this time of health emergency, we will also be prudent with our business agenda, deferring action when feasible, and we will not be accepting public comments on agenda items for the emergency period unless the item is a public hearing as required by law. We will have a limited amount of public seating where the audience can observe and listen to the meeting, however, we are using social distancing best practices. In the future, if you have information or comments related to an item on our agenda that you would like to have presented to the governing body, we encourage you to submit that information in writing rather than appear at our meeting. If you wish to submit information, please email those comments or statements to governingbody@cityofshawnee.org. Contact information for individual members of the governing body are on the website at cityofshawnee.org. Additionally, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names to vote in minority so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I do, but I don't see where I can raise my hand.
It's actually showing so many names. I'm not seeing just the councilmembers. Okay, which items would you like to remove?
Number sixteen and seventeen.
Okay. So would you like to open up discussion with those?
Yes, I would. I think on number sixteen about Dr. Sullivan's home, I know that it was, there was a large presentation made at one of our city council meetings in person by those with, related to Old Shawnee. And then we just recently had another presentation by the folks with Old Shawnee Town nineteen twenty-nine, just at our council committee meeting the other day. I would just like a little bit more information about the recommendation to reject the bids. I do know from, from my perspective, the information I read before, it was a significant amount of money. But if we could just have some more light shined on that, I think it'd be helpful for our citizens as well as myself, since we have had two presentations on that.
Do we have any staff to answer?
This is Nolan. I'm not sure if Neil is on. I believe he was. So if Neil's on, he can go ahead and jump in. We did put this out for bid. It's kind of, we talked about it in the memo. We only had one company that responded to the bids, came in higher than what we were projecting. And basically, the recommendation would be that we would go back and work with Strata, who's the historical kind of architect that we've been working with, and then kind of bring back a package to construct a kind of a replica of Dr. Sullivan's house. So I see Neil's on here, so I will turn it over to him. But basically, we just bring that back to you. So we are recommending to reject the bid and move forward to bring back another opportunity for you guys to look at. But I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nolan. Partial Recreation Director Neil Holman. And you're correct. We, we've always said from the very beginning, excuse me, that when we went, when we went and looked at the house, it would have been nice to have the house. But if we weren't able to through the bid, if the bids came out high, then we would, then we would come back to the council and we would build new. So we were trying to be responsible. The bids did come in over what we had. And so now we will look at the design and then building the new structure.
Neil? If they want to demolish the home, is there any opportunity for us to go in and get some of the trim and the things that you liked that were authentic?
Well, Stuart, the owner of the house is now going to have to turn around. He has not sold the land, so he will have to rent. He's going to go back and rent the house.
Okay.
So it's hard for us to go in and take things out when he's trying to rent it.
Okay.
We did look at the house on Martindale, the road project. There were some pieces from that. I think from, there were some pieces from the kitchen, some windows and some other items that we were looking at salvaging from that house on Martindale. So that's, that's kind of the direction that we, that we were going to go.
Okay.
Great. What did, thank you for, for sharing that. What, what did the bids come in at? Was it seventy, did I read seventy-three thousand over?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that's, I'm glad to see it. And, and so what, what are your thoughts moving forward, building new with the same type of home? Or what are you thinking at this point in time?
Yeah, we have, we have the footprint of the house. We have it all laid out so that we would, we would try to replicate that footprint of a house, of that house. That was a perfect house for the twenties of that era. Again, unfortunately, we won't have the historic fabric that that house had. It was just, it was just in very nice shape. So we will come in. The Friends of Shawnee Town have also donated the dollars for, you know, when we build these and it comes out of the liquor tax, we, we just build the structures. The, the hardwood floors, the tile floors, the kitchen, that's all going to come from the Friends of Shawnee Town.
Okay. And that was a hundred thousand from them?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding that. Okay.
Do any other councilmembers have any questions or comments on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yeah, Mr. Zimmerman, just, just one quick comment or question, I guess. For Neil Holman, I noticed it was just a single bid. And not only was it pretty high, it was also non-responsive. Looks like they kind of just disregarded the entire bid form. And also, just curious, do you think it's worth putting back out for bid so we can get more, a more competitive bid? Or is it time to move on?
We've decided to, if I, if I may say in a fishing term, we've decided to cut bait.
Okay.
There is really only one person around that does those house moves, as you see. So I, I think it'd be awful hard to, to
To solicit additional bids?
Yeah, I think it'd be awful hard to, to rebid it again.
Sure. Okay, I'm just curious.
Thanks, thanks, Dylan.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, you want to move on to your other item, Tammy?
Sure. The other item I wanted to talk about, and we did talk about it in council committee last week, was about the, the, the health insurance in particular for, for our employees. And let me preface what I'm going to say with this, that I have a tremendous amount of respect for our employees. They do a great job. They're doing what we expect them to do, and that is a wonderful job, a great job. And what I want to say is the citizens of Shawnee are providing a tremendous amount of benefit to our employees in their health insurance policy. The citizens of Shawnee are paying ninety-three percent of the cost of health insurance, leaving with our employees with about seven percent of that cost, which is extremely low investment by the employees when you look around our city. And I did a little bit of research from the Kansas City Business Journal as well as the Kaiser Family Foundation. And the typical for this part of the country is employers, employee share of benefits is in the neighborhood of seventeen percent. And we're at seven percent, and that's new. That just went up. Last year it was at four percent. And so while we have great employees, we also have a tremendous amount of indebtedness to our citizens as well because they are paying an extreme amount of money. In this difficult financial time, there's been no employees furloughed. In this difficult financial time, our employees have not been asked to reduce their pay and then fill in the gap with paid time off pay. And I think that based on what the majority of people in Shawnee are dealing with, that's unusual. And so what we're offering employees is tremendous, and I, I really want, I want to thank them for doing a good job. But I also want to make this statement that we are paying a tremendous amount of money to our employees in benefits. Healthcare especially, when you look at the norms of companies within the Kansas City area.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council on this item?
Yeah, Mayor, I might, real quick, if you've got a second.
Yeah, Councilmember Kimbley?
A technical question for staff. Since this item was discussed at committee, why did it end up on the consent agenda? I feel like those usually would come for an individual vote at the council meeting.
This is Liz Bernard, the HR Director. I put it on the consent agenda. I felt the discussion that you all had at the committee meeting was very in favor of moving this forward with an eight to zero vote. And just felt that everyone believed this was the right direction to go.
Madam Mayor?
I see that, but I, there's a lot of eight-zero votes that come out of committee that end up on the agenda. So I would have just preferred to have seen it on the agenda packet, not in the consent. That's the end of my comments.
Comstance?
Yes, I would like to kind of reiterate the point I made last week during this discussion that during a global pandemic, I think we absolutely should be providing good healthcare to our employees. I believe we have approximately three hundred and fifty employees in this city. We have first responders that are taking care of people in our community. And frankly, I think it's a matter of respect to show them that we want to provide them a competitive package for their healthcare so that they feel safe as they are keeping our families safe. And as we mentioned last week, our pay is very moderate, middle of the road compared with other cities. I don't know. I, I don't really understand the argument of making the people, keeping us safe right now, making them pay more. And, you know, to think that by increasing what they have to pay out of pocket for three hundred and fifty employees, that does not translate to a savings that is significant enough to show that, I guess, to me, it feels like a lack of appreciation. And, and I, I just, frankly, I, I think it's wrong at a time right now, like right now where we are really asking a lot of our city employees and our police and our firefighters. So I stand fully behind that, that we should go with this plan, and I think it's a good plan. And I hope we move forward and go on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson-Benau?
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas, I, I really appreciate you doing that research. And I really would have liked to have seen copies of that research. I find the Kaiser Family Foundation to be a very reliable resource for this kind of information. Now, with that said, can you tell me whether those articles said that they were not comparing all businesses, but comparing either nonprofit or governmental employees?
That was just merely across, across the Kansas City area. It was not specified. And I'll try to pull those back up so that I can provide you with that.
Because what we did see at our last meeting was that our out-of-pocket costs were somewhat consistent with our sister city. I'm sure we could do a cross-section across the entire state of Kansas and see something similar. I think that this is very much in line with the governmental employer positions because, as Liz explained before, the benefits really are part of the compensation, period. And, and on top of that, we are also asking our employees to pay, as we said, an additional twenty-five percent out of pocket compared to their last year's rate.
I think she made a correction, Liz. Didn't you make it look like a three percent increase?
No, that is not their out-of-pocket expense. That was their percentage of the total premium that they're paying. It's very different. And the reason that it's different is because the total premium went up so much that that three percent increase translated to a twenty-five percent increase out of pocket. I, I, I am not in favor of making any additional changes to what we have proposed.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, Councilmember Thomas?
I'm not suggesting we make a change. What I'm suggesting is that we remember who our payer source is, and that is our citizens. And so many of them currently today have lost jobs or are losing jobs, and those are the folks that pay these bills. And, and whatever we're talking about, increases in, you know, increases in insurance, well, that becomes an increase for them as far as our citizens go. And so I think anyone who's working out of a home, not only, I'm not asking for us to change a direction. This is more of an awareness of four percent. It goes from four percent to eight percent for an individual employee is now paying forty-eight dollars a month versus twenty-four. And, and the average in this Kansas City area, and it's not specified for, for city employees, governmental positions, is a hundred and twenty dollars a month. And so there's a stark difference in cost. And when our, when our payer source are the taxpayers, and I, I think we need to be very, very considerate of that. And our employees do a great job. And I think Nolan and his team, when they're looking at employees to hire, they're looking at employees that are going to do a great job every day, not most of the time. And these guys are certainly doing that. But across the board, people who do great jobs at work every day are losing their jobs, or they're being furloughed, or they're having to use their paid time off. And we have a wide variety of citizens, we have a wide variety of employees that are doing good work. Our first responders are doing tremendous amount of work. They do every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But we need to always be mindful of who the payer source is, and that is our citizens.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Comstance, and then Councilmember Lisa, Larson-Benau.
I guess I just wanted, for clarification's sake, what I just heard Councilwoman Thomas say, or what I heard implied is that this will result in a tax increase for residents. You just said, you referred to it as an increase in what they would pay. And I would, to clarify or ask for a clarifying question, that that would not be, be the case.
No, I didn't, number one, that's not what's intended to be implied. I'm just saying, our payer source of any money, City of Shawnee has no money. We have no money unless we take it from someone else, and that's our citizens. I mean, where do we get money?
Okay, I just was basically pointing out that our providing this insurance to our employees today does not equate to a tax increase. And, and that is what I had heard from your statement, so I was wanting to clarify that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larson-Benau?
So a couple of other things that we haven't talked about to put things into context is the amount of employees that we have per citizen is smaller than our, the other cities around us. So one thing that I, I hear all the time, and I hate to think that it's specific to Ward Three, is that we, like good government, and part of good government is having good employees and good management. And I don't think any citizen in Shawnee would say, it is worth it to me to save potentially a dollar maybe per year and make it so that our city employees have less, have worse health insurance or have to pay more for their health insurance. Everybody recognizes that being a, an employee of the city is not the most glamorous position. We are all grateful for the jobs that we have, but they also understand that they are compensated more with benefits than other industries are. So I would say that I think we run a very, very lean operation compared to other cities. And it, it doesn't make logical sense to say that somebody that is faced with their own challenges with having health insurance or having a job would want to look to somebody else and say, well, if I can't have it, you can't. Because that's really what the argument sounds like. So I, I, I understand what you're saying, that we don't have money that is not the citizens of Shawnee's money, and I absolutely agree with that, but I also think that we are very good stewards of that money. And this is to say that we are being good stewards of that money.
Yes, and I, I would agree with you. And now we've met ourselves in a time like we've never met in, in, in our time. And hopefully, we'll never meet again in our time. And it's not just here in the United States. It's not just here in Shawnee. It's worldwide. And so that's where I'm saying we need to be very, very mindful of the pockets that our funds that we use are coming out of. No, a dollar here, a dollar there, is that, you know, make or break? A dollar out of every pocket, I, you know, we, we can go down that road and go down those terms. But I think an overarching thought in our, as we take steps as a city and we're utilizing other people's funds to do so that have been allocated to us, we need to be very, very mindful. And this is just one example. The health insurance, I want our folks to have good health insurance. They have kids, they have their own issues if they're adults that sometimes need extra attention with, with the medical field. And I, we need to provide them appropriate insurance as an option. But I think in that same thought process, we need to be mindful of how we spend the citizens' money.
Okay, Councilmember Thomas, so what I'm hearing though is you're not wanting any changes on either of these items. Is it okay to continue to vote on them on the consent agenda, or do you want to vote on them separately?
No, I, I just wanted to share those thoughts and for folks that may be listening on the phone as well.
Okay, so then I'll go ahead and keep them on the consent agenda for the vote then. Does anyone, seeing done, so I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is mayor's items, and it was quite different in the council chambers five years ago. Today, I was actually being sworn in as mayor of the city. And lots of hugs and handshakes and all kinds of things were going on, but now we're in a different world. So I've asked City Manager Sunderman to provide an update on the city's response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be brief in my comments before I turn it over to the other folks on the call. Just wanted to say that I, you know, truly appreciate the support from the governing body during this challenging time. I also want to say thank you just to the entire community, including the business community for all the support that they've been providing, just all the stories you hear about our residents helping others and reaching out and just going above and beyond. So it's very, very nice to hear those things about our community. And I just, you know, we've got Emergency Services Chief Matt Epperson, Stephen, if you want to go to the next slide. Deputy C-Manager Stephen, we'll talk about just kind of the resident resources that are out there to make sure that information's being shared. Budget Director Don Kabi, we'll talk about kind of the financial impact and kind of what we're seeing currently based on the information that we have today. And then Ian Smith-Tate with the chamber will talk about kind of the business resource side. So, you know, as we approach kind of the, about one month really of kind of operating under these conditions, again, I just want to say how proud I am of the entire organization. Our folks across every single department have just really stepped up in numerous ways. You know, we continue to provide great public safety with our police and fire departments. But, you know, we've got our public works folks out there, our parks maintenance staff, just everybody out there doing a great work and just continuing, continuing our projects and doing those in a safe manner. You know, we're trying to, you know, not only protect the community, but also protect our workforce in a time like this. And also want to just recognize a lot of our internal services and folks that you guys may not see. See a lot, but just as Liz was on the call and, and our HR staff, IT, the work that they've been doing behind the scenes is amazing. When you have a situation like this, you kind of step back and think about the decisions and the direction that we've gone on things, whether it be six months ago, you know, a year ago or six years ago, to really have this IT infrastructure in place and that we're able to essentially mobilize our entire organization almost to work remotely and have this level of communication. So truly impressive. I also want to thank Ellis and the legal folks that we've been having out there and just researching different orders and just different legal challenges and things that we've been having questions on. Julie and all her work on social media and the website to get this information out. Of course, Stephen and Caitlin and all the additional work that they've taken on behind the scenes. And of course, you'll hear from, from Don here in a minute on the work of the finance department and as they're also finishing up the audit. So we have a lot of different things going on. Also want to just commend the Community Development Department, the work that they've been providing out there. You know, we are continuing to do claim reviews and permits, inspections. We're able to provide those in a safe manner. And I know I've gotten a lot of folks reaching out to me, thanking me that they are able to continue to do business and continue to operate. So they are extremely appreciative of the work that's been going on. And really, I just want to say that I'm very happy and thrilled with our organization and how adaptive we've been able to be in a time like this. So it's just truly impressive. It makes me proud. I hope you all are proud of the work that you continue to do and do it in a definitely different manner and unique. And as you guys know me, I'm, you know, I prefer the, the in-person meetings and sitting around the table and discussing something. And so it's, it's been a new way to, to use Zoom and obviously a lot of conference calls. So it's just a lot of different things going on, but our organization continues to provide those high-quality services. And just truly commend the staff of every single department for the work that they do. And, and it's been, it's been not something that you necessarily want to see, but, you know, this has been a definitely a challenging situation. But I'm just thrilled to see the reaction that our organization has had and the, the staff that just continue to, to, to reach out and continue to provide high-quality services to our residents. It's, it's really great to see. We've got a lot of information on our website, just on the services and events and things like that that Julie's been, been working on. So I won't rehash all that information, but we do have a lot of information out there on the city's website. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Emergency Services Chief Matt Epperson, and he can kind of run through these numbers for you. Before Matt, Matt jumps in here, I just also can't say enough great things about, about Matt and the work that he's done. Just really stepped up and just really thrilled with how, how well he's just jumped in and just the leadership that he has shown and a lot of hard work, a lot of hours. And, you know, I think all of us have basically had a phone glued to our ear for the last month. Just on, we jumped phone call to call to call, and Matt's been right there with us the entire time and just appreciate, truly appreciate the work that he's done. I know the management team is glad to have them on board and really appreciate that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Emergency Services Chief Matt Epperson.
I want to echo those sentiments as well. Matt, you've done an amazing job.
Well, thank you. Unfortunately, I, I think there's still a long way to go, but we're going to keep plugging away and see what we can do to get through this. I guess fortunately or unfortunately for me, a couple of the hats I wear, emergency management, the EMS chief, management, the EMS uh chief, and the infection control officer for the city kind of came to a the culmination um with this pandemic. So it's kind it's definitely taxing me in ways that I didn't really expect. Um, but what I want to uh provide you guys tonight is an overview of kind of, we'll break it down more, a regional picture of what's going on, uh, what's going on in county and then what we're doing here in Shawnee. Um, you can see with the the page in front of you, uh, all the all those jurisdictions are doing a really good job of trying to keep the public informed about what's going on, and and they're doing that through a number of mechanisms. Um, I believe you were provided with this presentation and everything uh on this slide here is hyperlinked to some of the different webpages, um, infographs, uh, other information that is useful for the public, but also for us in emergency management when we're doing our planning. Um, and you know, we're using these to help plan for the worst, but uh hope for the best. So, uh, if you go to the next slide.
Next slide, can we just ask one question, Matt?
How many were taken?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard to raise your hand on this, we've got to hear with so many people on the list, so I don't think Americans can notice. But on that last one where it talks about the city of Shawnee, could you just kind of frame that time on there? Is this uh, are we having recent cases or these older cases? Or uh, can you kind of put that perspective?
Uh, I do not know the timeframe on those. In fact, this was information that I think just started coming out last week from the county and the state that they have it uh broken down by zip codes. Um, and so I was just informed of this information, I believe, on Friday or Saturday, and all I know at this point is that there's thirty-one cases in Shawnee, but I don't know um if they were early or uh more recent onset.
It's kind of uh good, something we'd really like to know, because it's it's kind of pertinent, you know, whether we uh are starting to get cases and are these ones we've already had and our our social distancing is working real well and we haven't had any for a while. If you could, if they'd be able to provide you that information, you could pass it on to us, that'd be great. I know you don't, obviously you don't have it, they didn't give it to you, but uh if they could provide it, that'd be great.
Yeah, um, we can definitely take a look into that for you.
Thank you. Matt, this is Mayor Disler. Um, I was wondering too, so we do share a few of our zip codes with other cities. How do we determine they are indeed in Shawnee and not just in a shared zip code?
And that is an excellent point that uh at this point, I don't know if they even get that granular, uh, well, yeah, so I I can't give you a good answer to that. So some of those may not even be in Shawnee.
Okay. But close to Shawnee if they're obviously a shared zip code.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And and if you look at that, um, based on the numbers and based on the number of positive cases in the county, you know, Shawnee makes up about ten percent of the county population, and we've got about ten percent of the calls, so um it's pretty much in line. I'm I'm guessing it's going to be widespread and uh we'll talk about that a little bit later when we talk about the drive-through testing.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, yep, next slide. So, one of the things, and this is uh, this has been brought up on a couple of my calls lately, is that the peak date that keeps getting talked about, um, some of this you can actually see on one of the uh informational tools that's in those hyperlinks, that informational hub for the the region. Um, it will break it down by uh state on when they expect the peak number of of cases. Uh, but what we have to remember about that is that that is really more useful as a planning tool and not necessarily as a, okay, that's our get out of jail card and we can go do whatever we want after uh April twenty-sixth. Um, so I think that's something that I just wanted to point out, just so that you guys have on your radar, that anything um beyond that is obviously still going to be based on discretion of the public health officers of both the county and the state to make that decision on when we're going to, um, you know, open up and relax some of these orders uh to try and get things back to normal. But hopefully we're going to start figuring some of that out through uh more testing um and and other options and hopefully start to see that, you know, as they talk about the flatten the curve and and reduce the number of cases. I will say, based on the last slide, if you look at the um number of positive cases in Kansas versus Missouri, um, we're doing significantly better. Now, what that's attributed to, I it would just be a guess on my part, but we did lock down the state earlier than Missouri did. Um, and so is that a contributing factor? It might be, and that might be what helps us in the long run also. Um, so that's, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that's the case and that um this will uh resolve itself sooner than later, but um, like I said, plan for the worst, hope for the best. Um, go back to the next slide and we'll talk about some of those orders. There's obviously been a number of executive orders, different county orders, um, and it's created quite a bit of confusion, both uh in our internal discussions as well as I'm sure for the public. And so, you know, I think the big thing is, uh, so there's a number of different orders. Right now, it's basically just overall through the end of April is what we're looking at at this time. Uh, some of those will change a little bit after the um executive order twenty sixteen. Uh, time runs out on the eighteenth, um, but then there's twenty eighteen, that's through the thirtieth. And so there there's, I guess, really what I wanted to point out, that, you know, this is more uh in Ellis's wheelhouse on uh what orders are in effect, but um just wanted to touch on this a little bit, that right now it's basically through the end of the month and then we'll see what happens. So, um, next slide is some of the stuff that's going on at the regional level. So Mid-America Regional Council has been instrumental in, you know, just that regional coordination piece. And so one of the things that they are doing right now in in collaboration with a number of people is to stand up a multi-agency coordination group. And so this MAC group is made up of local um senior officials, agency administrators, executives or their designees, um, who are basically authorized to represent or commit agency resources and funds to support incident and activities. Um, this group, so the MAC group is is like I said, it's a group of senior um leaders throughout the metro, and they're kind of the the brains behind the operation. They're the ones making the big decisions, but they're supported by um this MAC's incident support team. And so it's kind of broken down by the chief of the MAC, and then there, right now, there's three different um sections. And what we're focusing on is situational awareness, so trying to just gather as much information as we can from across the region to make sure that we're making decisions that are um in line with what everybody else is doing. And to help coordinate that is the emergency public information section, to make sure that we're conveying that same message across across the region. Um, but also that resource support section. So those are the three main sections that we're looking at trying to um coordinate through this effort. But I think the big thing to point out and what we don't want there to be confusion on is that the MAC role is instant support, it is not incident management. So the MAC group is not necessarily making decisions. Any decision that is made is still going to be at the local or jurisdictional level. Um, we are there mainly to support the incident and make sure that people are getting the the PPE uh resources. We're looking at things like the um feeding, donations management, services for the homeless, um, coordination of EMS hospitals, alternate care sites, et cetera. So, um, just wanted to point that out, but I will also say that uh my position with uh the metropolitan or in Mark is with the Metropolitan Emergency Managers Committee. Uh, I am currently serving as the vice chair of that committee and uh and I guess by default, I am now part of this MAC group because of my position on on MEMC. So, uh, as it stands right now, I have been designated one of the three um rotating uh chiefs of the MAC to help coordinate this effort. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that I am um out there uh trying to make everything um support this incident as best I can, not only for Shawnee but for the Casey Metro area. Uh, so we can go to the next slide, which is actually just a little bit more about what I was just talking about. Again, the three different sections, um, we're going to continue to support those and build out this um organizational structure. Uh, and and the people that are filling those out are other people that are on um the co-chairs of some of the other committees, such as the public health, um, the public information officers, uh, regional EMS, um, and a number of others. So that's that's kind of where we're at with this. Uh, next slide. And if anybody has questions, please feel free to stop me. So through this, and you've probably heard that um there have been every state in the United States has now has a federal disaster declaration. Uh, Kansas uh is right there with them. And what this does is this now makes us eligible for reimbursement through the public assistance process. Uh, we went through this process after the storms in twenty seventeen and uh were able to be reimbursed uh for some of the expenses we had at at that time. Um, we are, since the very beginning of this, we have been uh tracking all of our costs related to this, whether it is for um sanitizing the stations, PPE procurement, uh force account overtime, any of those um things that we can that are approved to get reimbursed through public assistance, we both, we will be looking at um trying to get that reimbursement. So, um, like I said, that's something that we've been looking at since the beginning, and um I don't see us ha- having any issues with trying to get some of this, uh, the expenses that we've we've used on this um event to get that back. So, um, any questions on that?
I just want, Matt, it's very quick, is it, who's who's capturing this information? So they can put together whatever we submit to the state for reimbursement?
Um, so it's across the board. I mean, we've got, uh, so finance department created several account codes um that we're using to track, so and and this this message is going out across the city to all the departments. Anytime that there's an expense related to um the coronavirus, it's noted, and with the new uh finance software, it is already coded to be uh coded for COVID. And so it'll be easy to pull that information out when it comes to our our um time for personnel. Uh, again, we have an account code in our um in our um software for our payroll that is tracking that. Um, so everything is is being tracked as we go.
So it's being tracked by our finance folks and uh in the final report we send out of to get reimbursement up to the state, that's going to be submitted by who, who who's rose-tinned on? Is that the same city manager? Who who's going to be the responsible guy here, gal?
Um, I'm helping to coordinate that effort, and the the state has an online portal that we're able to submit all of our documentation as we go along. Um, and yeah, I think, I mean, obviously ultimately the city manager would have the final sign-off on that, but.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Larson, one else.
Thank you. Um, I, thank you very much for this slide recapping. One of the things in my own work that I've been doing quite a bit over the last couple of weeks is looking at all of the different grants and loans and everything that are available from the federal and the the state government, although I'm looking in Missouri. And one of the things that has shocked me is that while FEMA is a big player and that they are not the only player, and just about every government government agency that you can imagine is um flinging around grant money right now. Um, examples include the Department of Transportation, the FCC, the um Department of Health and Human Services, of course. Um, what are, how deep have we gone to see what other agencies are offering either grants or loans, forgivable loans, things like that?
Uh, to be honest, I don't have a great answer for you on that one. Um, I'd have to defer to some of the other staff, but uh to my knowledge, uh, to be honest, at this point, expenditure-wise, um, the PPE that we've gotten has primarily come from the state stockpile, uh, the strategic national stockpile. Uh, we we have had some expenditures, um, but I I don't think they're uh great expenditures at this point. So I I think it's something that we should absolutely look into to see if there's other ways to recover any of these funds, but um I don't have a uh a better answer for you at this time.
Mayor, this is Eric Jenkins. Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I think it was, I think Lisa's bringing up a really good point, that there are the funds out there, they are floating around, they're available, but for the most part, those funds are being placed out there by their own agency, the agency that manages those funds specifically. And most of those funds are targeted to go out to a a specific portion of of the uh the world. I mean, some are targeted for for uh individuals, some may be targeted for businesses or restaurants, other funds may be targeted for transportation from DOT. I mean, there could be a a myriad of different funding mechanisms out there, but those really don't cross over into the uh into the emergency response and uh and public assistance program. So that's where Matt's coming from here. Yeah, there's still people that can go and apply for loans, but and that, in fact, some of the ones, uh, that's some of the stuff that I've uh that Ian Smith Tate's been working with, trying to uh get word out there and try and get tie together these um virtual workshops and stuff to just let people know what is out there, because you're kind of, it's incumbent upon those people in that pipeline to apply for those. And um getting that information out is really difficult. There is no one-stop-shop for it, really.
So, uh, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Councilmember Larson, one else.
Um, uh, councilmember Jenkins, you're you're absolutely right, and that is normally how it works, but I am saying that there is an unusual amount thing of things coming from different agencies that probably do apply to the city and apply directly to the city and not just the businesses within the cities. Um, and this only occurred to me as I started working on an FCC grant that was targeted to hospitals. Um, the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, is not a place that we would usually look to for money, but it happens to be that all of these agencies are using very creative mechanisms to give money to places that they think are deserving. And it's not, and and this might be a broader discussion, it's not just for emergency management exactly, it can be things like um that you had to, but for instance, if we are low-staff, it, there are ways that we can pay our staff with some of these funds. Um, there, I'm just saying that they're out there, they're not all from FEMA. I think FEMA is going to be the bulk of it, but um I hope that somebody is looking at that, because as um councilmember Thomas pointed out, we need to make sure that we are good stewards of our taxpayers' money, and it's worth exploring.
Yeah, we will definitely um explore other options if if we can find them, so uh thank you for that suggestion. Um, next slide. So this kind of goes back to Mr. Jenkins' point about uh how widespread is this right now? And so you may have seen some new uh information on the news about Johnson County starting to do drive-through testing. Um, so what their plan is right now is I think they're trying to get over a several week period, they're trying to get uh four to five thousand residents. Again, this is a random sampling, and so what they're doing is they are actually um soliciting residents of the county to come taste, take this test. Um, and they're doing it based on a couple of factors. One is just, again, the rate, but also they sent out a survey last week, and some of it is based on the replies to those surveys. So if if there were some people that were um symptomatic, they may end up receiving an invitation to come get tested. And so what they're doing is they've got three drive-through sites that they're using. They started the first one last Friday and held it in Olathe. Um, they were supposed to start in Shawnee also, eh, as well as the Lee Wood site, but they are still um unable to procure the necessary sampling supplies to get this done. Um, and so we are, we are still kind of in limbo. Uh, I heard today that it's probably not even going to happen this week, at least in Shawnee, so um we're we're still, we've got um, we're, we're still, we've got some plans for that, but right now, um, we're, we're still waiting for that. So hopefully by them uh doing this random sampling, we're going to get a better idea of how widespread it is regardless of whether or not somebody has gone into the hospital and been tested there because they have, uh, you know, the more significant symptoms that, that other people don't have. Um, so that's a little bit of an update. Uh, you may, you may hear more about this happening in Shawnee and, and right now um, in order to minimize uh the amount of traffic and uh, you know, just people trying to get into the site, uh, they are keeping those site locations disclosed. It's not a huge secret, but um, uh, they are trying to keep that from being publicly disclosed anyway until it happens. Uh, any questions on that?
Hey Matt, this is me just where I do. So um two things. One, at the uh council mayor's meeting last week, Chairman Eiler did state that they had made the announcement about the random testing and then when they ordered them, nobody could fulfill the order and he didn't know in the past week at that time. So you may have more updated information, but last week at that time when the tests would come in. Um, secondly, I don't know if any other council members have been contacted by any residents, but I have been contacted by some residents. Most recently, a woman whose husband is very sick, his coworker at the post office did test positive for COVID, but they cannot get him tested. So we're doing random tests, but how are people with symptoms getting tested? Do you know?
I think it depends on the severity of their symptoms. And obviously they're not doing very many random samples because they the supplies, I think that's a real shortcoming in this whole process. Um, a lot of it was just you know, so there's a lot of people because of the lack of supplies that they're just either presumptive positives because they have the signs and symptoms. But that's not necessarily indicative that they're, they are positive. We had a couple um firefighters that we sent to get tested because they were symptomatic. But after they got tested, um, it came back negative. So it, it's really hit or miss on, you know, whether the signs and symptoms are, are an accurate description uh, that they have COVID nineteen and and it's unfortunate because a lot of people are being assumed that they're positive and, and if their symptoms are not that significant, you know, they just go home and they ride it out, which is fine. And that's, I mean, that's for the best, but uh, until they, they start getting the, the trouble breathing, um, that's when it's, it's the time to go to the emergency room to get that looked at.
So then direct them to KDHE or where, like when our guys, where did they get tested? Where should we direct people to contact us?
So they, for first responders, um, throughout the metro, they work to set up uh in partnership with St. Luke's. They have three St. Luke's locations that are designated uh specifically for first responders. Then if we have first responders that are um symptomatic, then they are kind of first in line to go get tested. And you know, more or less the, how that helps is, is it if, when they, if they do come back as negative, um it doesn't mean that they won't get it down the road, but it means that at this time they're negative and we can get them back to work as long as they're not symptomatic anymore. So um, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, uh, at, at, at some point, we may have drive-through testing here in, in Shawnee for the um by invitation. But um, we're going to just keep waiting to see when they actually get their needed supplies in. So um, next slide, and then that will be my last slide and guys let me know if you have any other questions. So fortunately, um the PPE situation for Shawnee Fire and Police Department has improved. Um, now, again, that depends on how long this goes on and if we see a significant increase in the number of calls, you know, over the next three or four weeks. Um, we have received a number of uh N ninety-five masks, surgical masks, we've gotten some gowns uh, and a few other things from that strategic national stockpile. Uh, we've also found a few different uh vendors who have been able to source a small amount of PPE for us, for us to purchase. Um, but right now we're doing okay. Uh, we've also implemented a number of efforts to prolong the use of our PPE. Um, one of those is the use of UV sterilization. Um, so there are three uh UV sterilization setups throughout the county, but our PD also took the initiative and used one of their drying cabinets, basically ordered the UV light bulb that's required and added it to that cabinet so that they can do their own UV sterilization right there at the police department. Um, and they are gracious enough to allow our department to also go over and use that since they can do it all within the city. So that's going to help us uh prolong the use of our PPE. We can sterilize them up to five times before uh we have to toss them. So um, that is, that is very helpful and there are a number of efforts underway at both, at, well, all levels really, at, at the city, at the county and even through Mid-America Regional Council to um source vendors, you know, at this point in time, many of the vendors are requiring minimum orders. And you know, some of those minimum orders are a hundred thousand masks and that's just not feasible for uh, you know, the city of Shawnee or maybe even the county, but if the county or Mid-America Regional Council is able to do a cooperative purchasing um program where they're the sponsor and then everybody's able to purchase from them, they can make that happen. So there's a number of efforts underway like that. Um, to be able to source PPE and keep us up and running um for the long term. Um, we also are accepting donations and we have identified our fire prevention officer, Tracy Devater, as kind of our donations management point of contact. And so, you know, we've had a number of, of people either throughout the community or um from anywhere really, but who have been generous enough to donate some masks and some other PPE. And so we are tracking those donations and um hopefully we're going to be able to give a big shout out to everybody at some point um for the, for the things that they're donating to us. Um, and then on top of that, we have also been soliciting, as, as you may know, CDC has changed their guidelines on cloth masks and we have kind of made the determination that we are trying to provide those masks for our employees um, in a number of cases. For the first responders, they would only be used, uh, be used if they're going to the store or around the station. Anything like that, they would not be used on um emergency medical calls or in contact with the public where they may be in that close contact where the surgical or, or medical grade mask is required. So it would be more just to help prevent the spread of it than anything else, but we have received a number of donations of the cloth mask. Um, and Caitlin is helping spearhead that effort for the rest of the city employees. And then the police department and fire department are kind of taking on those efforts because we've had a few offers from um, uh, different people to provide those for uh police and fire. So that's kind of where we're at with everything right now. Um, if you guys have questions, please feel free to reach out at any time. And um yeah, thank you. Stay safe, stay healthy, wash your hands and have a great night.
Thank you for, again, for everything that you've done and for representing Shawnee so well. And I am certain that you're probably the best of the three chiefs of Mac, so. Thank you so much. You've really stepped up and, and done an amazing job.
Well, thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Uh, next I believe we have uh Stephen Powell, DPC manager, just kind of talking about some of the uh uh volunteer efforts that have taken place as well as just some of the resources that our residents um can access out of the community.
Yes, thank you Nolan. Um, on this slide, we have our resources for residents and um, United Way two one one is an excellent resource for residents who are needing assistance with food, rent or utilities. Also, the Harvesters Community Food Network is a great resource, um, as well as our own Shawnee Community Services. Uh, we've had our volunteers as well as others from the community and beyond uh making masks as Matt talked about uh for first responders and other employees, and those masks are currently being sorted and distributed. Uh, Chris Nguyen and the Faith Community have assisted with Blood Drive hosted by the Red Cross, and they've also taken care of a few requests from residents who needed help getting groceries. Um, Shawnee Mission School District and the Soto School District are providing free meals for kids who are one to eighteen years for no charge. Um, and although we've suspended many of our volunteer activities, we continue to push out information and work with our faith, faith community on specific requests so that they can reach out personally to those organizations. And then additionally, the city received roughly a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in additional community development block grant funds. And Lauren Grasshoff, our neighborhood planner, is researching the rules on how those funds can be used. And um, as soon as we have that information, uh Nolan will certainly share it with you all. And I'll turn it over to Dawn unless anyone has any questions. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, just a quick update on um our financial position. Normally we wait until the audits completed and, and start this process uh at the beginning of the budget process. So we're jumping on this a little bit early. We did in twenty nineteen about forty-six percent general fund balance. That's more of a cash basis um analysis. The numbers change a little bit when it's uh reported in um in accrual basis. So when you see, when you see those numbers, they may be different, but um we can only work with cash basis right now. And for all of our funds together, we have uh about fifty-four percent balance for all of our funds. Um, and on the next slide, I'll give you a, a kind of a visual view of this. Uh, we currently project about an eighteen percent decrease in sales and use tax revenue. Uh, I provided a memo to Nolan which goes into that detail and, and how we came up with those numbers. But uh, we believe that's a fairly accurate number. I've been um asked to do, be in a working group with the leagues. Um, finance, I guess, the finance working group with several cities across the state and really it's to compare notes, make sure that we're all uh thinking about some of these issues the same, but realizing that every city's different. Every city has a different makeup of that sales tax base. And in our case, um, we're significantly different from uh an Overland Park or Olathe. Overland Park's um much more from what I can see that uh while we have um a heavy reliance on sales tax, we believe that about sixty percent of our retail, um, or sixty-six percent of our retail base uh is um in those, more of those essential services type things. So the grocery stores, um, materials, um, less of the discretionary spending. I, and, and again, I could go into detail on that, but we feel like uh that we're not heavy on a lot of um stores, uh, big, larger stores that um derive most of our revenue. Neither are we heavily uh invested in car lots and things that are high priced, but also um tend to fluctuate more. So that I think puts us in a little better position than others, but um at the same time, it's not that rosy. We know that we will see a drop. So uh, right now, based on the information we have, we're predicting around eighteen percent. And if you want to flip over to the next slide, Stephen, I'll, I'll hit the next bullet point. This is just a quick, a quick chart, show a little bit about the impact visually. Our general fund balance is around uh twenty-five million. And if we were just to take the loss that we expect in sales tax um over the, the rest of the year, that eighteen percent drop, that's about um three point eight million in the general fund and about five million in all funds. Uh, when we recalculate the balance then, so in the first uh set of, of bars there under general fund, you can see that the balance uh drops about forty-five, or four million dollars, the white, the dark blue and the light blue. And you can see the revenue, the overall revenue, um, just from the sales tax drop, you can see that seeing uh to give you a proportionality of, of what the change would be to the general fund. If we did nothing else other than re- retain what we believe will be a balanced budget prior to these cuts, uh, we would see about a four percent drop in the ending balance as a percentage of revenue. So of course, that is not factored in. All the revenue changes we'll see, like the pools possibly not being open. If that were to happen or delay what those cost revenues, those, those percentages can be all over the board. But just to try to grab a point in time and show you the impact, we believe um it's about a four percent drop in the general fund. In all other funds, that would be the Parks and Pie, uh, public safety equipment, those other sales taxes there in the middle. Um, that balance, um, is, there's not as much revenue uh in all those funds uh total, but there's also less of a drop, only about one point two million that we would see. So the overall balance in those, all other funds would be a little over a percent drop. And then when all the funds are put together, you'll see the drop is about uh fifty-four point eight percent down to fifty-two percent. So um, the reason to show you this graphically or visually is, while it's a lot of money and um people are worried, uh, we were in a very strong financial situation uh with ending balances, expecting at one point um, a possible recession. Uh, one of the reasons we issued debt early this year was we were expecting there to be uh increases in rates at the end of the year. And um, we missed that by six months uh thanks to the virus, but I think that was something we saw coming. Uh, that money, then um, then some of that balance, we expected to uh to uh move that forward to recover for this, at least what we hope is short term. But uh for the long term, we will continue to do analysis of, of the revenues at the, through the budget process, but also once we can actually see data coming in from the state, it'll make a big difference. And the statewide numbers will come in in April uh for the March receipts, and then we won't see that money until May, but it'll give us a little bit of heads up on what we might expect um, in overall sales taxes. So we just wanted to uh give you a little bit of information on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this or some of the details behind it.
Anyone have a question?
Good question.
Councilmember Nap, can I?
Yeah, first of all.
First of all.
Is there feedback on your end? Okay. Uh, Dawn, thank you for the, for the, for the analysis. And I think this is exactly what we've all been looking for. And I know it's really early on, so it's really a guessing game, but I appreciate you putting it together. Um, I guess I have a question and a comment. My question is what's the length of time that, that you've estimated that, that it's out, that we're, that there's a lockdown? Is it through April or is it further out?
No, it was um, really what I estimated is that we would see um March be close or a little bit lower. Um, in April be the worst month and May maybe a little bit of a rebound, but not a lot. And then after that, a slow climb back up to the end of the year, but not getting um, let's say we're back to eighty or ninety percent. I will say that from everything we've been hearing, that part might be a little rosy as far as uh the, the comeback and how things are released, but I think for the short term, um, basically took all bars, restaurants, revenue to zero for the next couple of months, and that is not happening. Uh, so, you know, it is a guessing game and we tried to use, um, you know, we, I talked to other finance directors and we talked about, you know, how we're all adjusting it. And funny enough that we all ended up doing very similar type things uh before we talked. And then after we talked, I think we all felt better about our guests. So um, but it is not something that's, it's not what they call the V return. It's going to drop for two months to come back. It's going to be a sloping return by uh on sales tax for sure.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll see how things go. And obviously this is, is a big time guessing game. We have no idea. But uh, I know I'm really encouraged to see that, that while it's a lot of money, um, you know, it looks like our leaders have put Shawnee in a good spot, honestly, to weather some of these storms. And so uh with the, with the um the reserve money that we've got. So really happy to see it. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, can we go forward?
All right, I'll uh turn it over to uh Chamber CEO and President Ian Smith-Tate. Uh, again, just Again, just want to thank her for the leadership that her team has shown and all the work that they've been doing out there to support. I will say the entire business community, as you all know, the chamber is a membership organization, but, but Anne and her team have done a great job of just trying to reach out to all Shawnee businesses in a time like this. And so I just appreciate all the work that her and her team have done to really get out there and then help everyone. So, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to join the meeting tonight. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yeah, as you all know, we are now working remotely, as most of America is, but we, I think, are working harder than ever to serve not only our members, but as Nolan indicated, I mean, we really, you know, strongly all believe that this is no time to be focused on who's dues-paying member of the chamber and who's not, but we really are working to elevate to the best of our ability all of the businesses in Shawnee. So, you know, to that end, we've been working a lot behind the scenes with our federal partners, talking with Senator Moran's and Representative Davis' office, certainly been working at the state level with our Secretary of Commerce and the whole Department of Commerce. They've really stepped up. They pulled most of their field staff off of the general projects and recruitment that they do and are having them all focus on the SBA side of things. So we're working with them daily. And then certainly at a regional level and local as well, we have a consortium of the chamber execs being driven out of the Johnson County Enterprise Center, but we are working, meeting weekly to discuss best strategies to help not only with the rescue, but also with the recovery. And then, of course, we really could never ask for a better partner than our, our local city of Shawnee. You guys have all been so great. And I've talked to a lot of the council members. The city staff has really stepped up. We've asked for a few concessions to help our businesses. I mean, the answer's been yes, what else can we do? You know, special shout out to Steve Hawke. I mean, he's fairly new on the team, but he's been working hard every day with us to try and reach out to each one of our members. So we've been doing a lot of stuff, and I'll get into that, but also behind the scenes, just wanted to let you know that we are calling, working our way through our list, trying to call each one of our members to check in and see how they're doing, just trying to understand anecdotally sort of what their main pain points are. We're hosting some roundtables. We have a restaurant roundtable that we are doing every other week, just to get a little bit of a check-in and are going to start doing some, really focusing on what will our sort of general office businesses need for recovery? How do they see the transition from where we are today to getting back open and fully functioning happening? And what are those things that we can be doing to support them? So, you know, with that, we've been working very hard. There is just a tremendous amount of information, and I know that you are all trying to take it all in as well. So we have started a webinar series, something ironically that we had talked about doing before, but thought we really couldn't, nobody would join. But, you know, we've had great participation in the webinars that we have done. We had, in March, we made our lunch that and we had representatives from Moran's and from David's office on, as well as our own lobbyists to talk about what's been happening at the state level. We were fortunate to get the Vice President of Small Business Advocacy for the U.S. Chamber of Commerce to speak to our membership last week. We've focused on the FMLA Act and what that means, and then we've got several things coming up. One focused specifically on the economy and what that means to our local businesses. And then actually, we just confirmed late Friday that Secretary Tolan of the Kansas Department of Commerce will host a town hall style question and answer for our small businesses this Friday. So would encourage you all to, to join in on that as well. If you have questions for Secretary Tolan, they are asking, it's possible to get those ahead of time. His time's limited, so I think he must make sure he can get through as many questions or cover as much information in his opening remarks as possible. And then, of course, we're working, you know, one of the big things that we offer our members and businesses is that ability to connect and to work together. So we're doing all sorts of different ways of virtually connecting everybody through our app connects. We're hosting a happy hour this week and continue to brainstorm ways that we can be creative with that. If you can go to the next slide. We've taken a lot of time and doing a lot of research in what are the resources that are out there. We created most of that, or put all of that online, separate resource page for our businesses. We have been sending daily. We've reduced the amount as the new information flow is starting to, to slow. We're sending out every other day emails, answers with the COVID updated, looking for both information at the federal level, but also making sure that our businesses are aware of the resources that are out there at a local level, including things like the Hire Act, which was funds released by the state, the Alt Cap Fund, another regional source of funding for our small businesses, and then just updates. We've also, I know there was mention before about the request for PPE. We did ask our members to, if they had extra, or like we had a meal salon, I know that donated some masks and I think gloves, and we've had one of our recovery that goes in, cleans up after fires, they've donated some stuff as well, I think. So we're out trying to solicit that where we can and whatever is needed and just in general, sharing that information. One of the first orders that came down, as you all well know, was the limiting crowds at first to 50, then ultimately to 10, but also subsequently making most of our, all of our restaurants from dine-in to just carry out and drive-through only, which was a pretty large change for many of them to, to quickly ramp up. You know, we've got just some truly innovative and amazing business owners in this community, and you, you really see that entrepreneurial, innovative spirit come through and what some of our business owners have come up with. You know, it's, it's really trying times, but it's been really kind of fun and interesting to see all the different ways that they have, you know, been able to sell their products. So we have been putting a lot of effort behind our social media campaign. We, as a general rule, don't put any money behind boosting our posts or anything like that, but we have dedicated some of our marketing funds to supporting that because typically, our Facebook is really for our membership and we're not worried about reaching just the average Shawnee citizen. But for this campaign, we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, kind of reaching every John and Judy citizen out there to let them know what businesses were open, what they could do to help, how they could participate and, you know, saving the businesses that have been so important to their family lives, their family dinners, or supporting their, you know, kid's T-ball team or whatever. So on the screen, you will see the metrics and, you know, we had, you know, 840 new likes and, you know, the, the reach that we had was close to 20,000 and, you know, some other just detailed information in there about our webpage performance and all that. So we were pleased that we were able to reach so many and we continue to put our marketing resources really dedicated towards this. We think that that's really where the, where we need to right now. I, I will share anecdotally, as I mentioned, we have been doing these restaurant roundtables via Zoom. And, you know, we're hearing, well, it, it certainly isn't the same, as you can well imagine, that's being open, that the restaurants, you know, I'll just name one, the other place just specifically was very, just complimentary and very grateful for the support that they're seeing from their patrons in Shawnee and just really, you know, seen that across from so many of our restaurants. I know Sunbrero's and Herbert House and Old Shawnee Pizza and the breweries. You know, again, it doesn't compare to life pre-COVID, but, you know, they all just expressed so much gratitude to, you know, to all of us working to support them, but to really the, you know, everybody that is going out and buying dinner from them. So I just would echo that, thanks to everybody listening that is ordering pizza and grabbing a beer or whatever, barbecue or tacos. Please keep at it, our businesses need you. We are going to start just a sign campaign. We've had a couple of our chamber businesses step up and they want to support, what else can we do? I mean, we get that question a lot, what else can we do? We are printing 500 of the signs that just support Shawnee. We'll be handing those out to our businesses. They can either put them in their, on their property or in their window or whatever. I think that just getting that message out that we are all in this together and we need to work together to create that grassroots support for our community. And we think those will be ready next week. We don't have a final print date on those. One of the other, obviously, huge effects that we've seen is a lot of people have lost their jobs due to this, but we also know that there are businesses hiring. So we are trying to do our best to connect any of those that have been displaced or furloughed or just have lost their employment due to COVID and connect them with those businesses like Amazon and Price Shopper and Walmart. Several are hiring. And so we're, during our calls that we're making individually to our businesses and then through our email communications and on our website, we're asking if any business is hiring, please let us know, let us share that information. If you know somebody that is looking for work, you know, point them to that page and we're, we're trying just to, you know, get it. Sometimes it's just two or three jobs that people are hiring for, a couple of contractors are hiring just a few jobs, but, you know, it's all really, all, you know, every little bit helps. So we're working on that front as well. We have been sending out surveys just to try and get a beef on really where our businesses are. We've sent out three surveys. I won't go over in full detail here, but generally, you know, we, we started asking, you know, back in the middle of March, you know, kind of what the effect is. And as you can well imagine, nearly, we have 92% have said that their business that has been affected by the COVID outbreak and responses. Primarily, that has come in the form of supply chain interruption. Sales negatively impacted has been the huge issue for our businesses. And then, you know, just operation changes, as, you know, all of you, we're all switching now, working remotely and, you know, even for the best of us, that's a little bit of disruption. And, you know, really some of the things that they're working on, you know, doing to kind of get their arms around that is, you know, they're laying people off, but they're also, you know, restricting expenses and, you know, maybe modifying schedules, stocking up and making sure that people are clean and sanitized and all of that. So we will continue to modify that survey, but keep asking those questions. One of the questions that we are going to start asking is how can we support you into recovery? I think we need to start thinking about that now, not when we see those orders lifted. So that's certainly something that we're working hard on behind the scenes as well. So again, you know, we're open to suggestions and ideas. We've gotten several great ideas from all of you. Like you, we're all kind of feeling our way through this for the first time, but, you know, just want to let you know that the eight of us are working hard every day for the businesses of Shawnee.
Okay, does anyone on the council have any questions?
May I make a comment?
Councilmember Larson-Benham and then Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you. Really, thank you very much for that information. And this is going to be very brief. I'd just like to make a call to arms to my fellow council members that have a social media presence. We should all be sharing posts from our local businesses and from our chamber, encouraging our residents to support Shawnee. And there is just so much material out there that's just really easy for us to push. And I, I know personally, I have promoted businesses that have done specials and I've received feedback saying, hey, I just went there, I'm so glad that you pointed this out. So we should all be doing our part to get that information out. Thank you.
Thank you. And then after Councilmember Jenkins, we'll have Councilmember Zimmerman and then Councilmember Chaffee.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Jenkins. I didn't really have that much. I just appreciated Andy gave a little bit of your gut reaction and he gave a little bit of feedback from the, from the restaurants on how it's going, because I was just curious about that. And I was hoping it was having some sort of impact. It's just, I understand it's very hard to collect some empirical data and actually get some numbers, so it's going to have to be more of a gut feel for what's going on than the real, you know, the real numbers. But I appreciate you giving us some feedback on that. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll keep this short as well. First and foremost, Anne, always impressed with what you and your team put together. Thank you for your presentation. I, I think you're just knocking it out of the park in regards to reacting to the situation and the whole staff is knocking it out of the park, but I'm, I'm just so impressed with what you're doing. And then last but not least, Lisa threw out the challenge there to do, to amp it up on Facebook. And Lisa, I'm sorry, I'm horrible at Facebook, but I'll do everything word of mouth and email. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chaffee and then Councilmember Nappan.
I just wanted to echo kind of the, the thanks that the others have mentioned to Nolan and Matt and Stephen and Don and Anne, all for the, I feel like we are in great hands with our leadership, you know, kind of as I think Kurt mentioned earlier, it looks like our, you know, leadership has put us in a good situation financially and feel like we are just, we're in good hands. I'm encouraged to hear, you know, some of the creativity and the innovation that has come through this, you know, all the way from the staff at City Hall to our various departments, you know, to the chamber. I think keep us posted, you know, as, as what we can do as a council to support any of those efforts, but, you know, we're all in this together and I just, I feel like, you know, we've got the best team assembled to weather this.
Councilmember Nappan?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, from a city council perspective, in role as a city council person, the, the two most important things I think we can do are actually look out for our residents, do whatever we can to help, but then do whatever we can to help these small businesses. I know all of our biggest fears that this is over and we've lost 40% of our businesses that are the core of, of our community. So I agree with Lisa's comments. I know I'm doing quite a bit on Facebook as well with pretty good feedback. I think that's a great idea, Lisa. And I guess my other question, and I do want to thank the chamber, because I think Anne, your, your team is doing a really good job. And specifically of sharing the information, whether it's county level, state level, I know I've been on a couple of those calls. So, but I guess my question, because our business owners, I feel like, are so busy and they're just trying to keep things going, whether it's, if you think about the local restaurant owner, are you set up to where if an individual business, small business owner gives you a call to where you can hook them directly with maybe the best grant opportunities, the, the best opportunity to reimburse their employees, some of those things to where, or is that too taxing if we would encourage people to call you directly to discuss their situation? That was my question and that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Sure. Well, I, I appreciate everyone's support. Thank you so much for the kind words for our team. You know, just quickly, it, it really, it makes a big difference when you have people working for something that they really care about. And I think that that's, in times like this, is when you can really tell that the people at the chamber and the people at the city care about what they do, the citizens and the businesses and the community at large. So I appreciate that from everybody. I would suggest, we're always happy to troubleshoot with any business that we can. That's kind of what these roundtables have been about, where, and again, we're just kind of stumbling our way through it, if I'm being totally honest, but just to give everybody a format to brainstorm. But when it comes down to specifically, you know, navigating the SBA, we are pushing everybody towards the Small Business Development Center. They have really more in-depth training and knowledge and frankly, would provide better handholding and guidance than I think our chamber staff could. So while we certainly would happily talk to them and kind of get them connected with somebody at the Small Business Development Center and with somebody at the Small Business Development Center and um, the Women's Employment Network, um, the Johnson County Enterprise Center, everybody that has, um, anybody is really trying to step up and do this. You know, one of the challenges that we're facing and you're, you're seeing this with the Department of Labor is that we were in such um, you know, robust economy that, that none of these organizations were staffed up to a level to handle the number of people that are, are calling in. So um, but you know, we can certainly, you know, do our very best to get them connected and sometimes it's nice to have a name and a number and email versus just call that, call the Small Business Development Center. You know, I mean, it's a little daunting and overwhelming and to whatever extent we can make um, warm introductions via email or just, you know, make sure people have a name or follow up with them, we're happy to do that as well.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ann.
Uh, Senator Thomas.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the, the folks who have not been mentioned or faces that are typically unseen and that is that of uh, vulnerable children. And as we move out of this with schools having been closed, parents and grandparents who are caring for them, losing their jobs, uh, rent not being paid, house payments not being made because of loss of jobs. Those children are very vulnerable, as is the entire family. And I know business is one thing, but the, the, the grit of our community is our children. And we as a city, how are we going to address that? I know churches around town um, are putting together groups that will help families. What are we as a city doing to communicate or even maybe it may not be an official business, if you want to say? What are we doing about communication um, with regard to families in need where children may be most at risk when you consider school is closed and there's been anywhere from a fifty to seventy percent decrease in hotline calls to our state agencies for the well-being of children? And that's attributed to the fact that children aren't seen. What are we doing?
Yeah, Stephen, do you want to go back to your slide? Uh, we do, we did uh, reference a few of those resources out there and trying to work closely um, to share that information. I know the schools are um, obviously providing meals and the United Way contacts and I'm also working closely with our uh, faith community and, and knowing that, that, that they're also kind of eyes and ears out there for us. Um, obviously, um, you know, something comes through with, you know, our public safety and police and, and fire departments. Um, but obviously, as you mentioned, you know, sometimes those kids, to your point, you know, they're, they're not seen. Um, so you know, we're hoping that between the, the faith community, uh, some of the volunteers and things, that if we do have information that we're aware of or things need to, to, you know, be checked on, uh, that we'll be able to communicate that and get that information. But obviously, um, you know, there's a number of articles discussing uh, how challenging uh, that, that segment of the population um, is right now. Uh, quite honestly, to your point of that, they're in a situation right now where they, they are not seen. Uh, so, so it is very uh, challenging uh, situation with that population.
Yeah. I just hope that we can um, understand as leaders of our community that we ourselves reach out to those organizations and those points because we may need to step up and um, walk alongside those families. Those families need help. Many times they're socially isolated anyway and just a voice of concern or willingness to reach out to them can, can save them from the rink of unraveling. And what may seem like not a big deal to us um, could be the very thing that unravels their entire family forever. And uh, I think we as leaders and as, as responsible adults within our community play a huge part in that. And um, I would ask the chamber um, to, to, to really think about that. How do they engage? It may be slightly off of a typical path, but how do we work with, with our churches and, and those families that have the potential to step in and perhaps care for a child that is uh, within our community or work with Pastor Chris Nguyen at Faith City Partnership and develop that pool of volunteers? It's nice to have that and say, oh, we have this in our quiver, but what part do we play in that? Do we volunteer for that? And I think that's, we, we need as individuals and as leaders and as parents and um, to really do a deep dive of ourselves and see, see how we can support those people, those families.
Can I, can I, Mayor, can I point out something? Okay. Um, so regarding the concern for children, I did want to just put out there that I've been really pleased as an employee of Shawnee Mission, of course, with the meals. I think that's been incredibly helpful and I'm really glad to see that continuing. Um, and then schools are really doing a good job of having the social workers that are already employed and already know the, know the families, really reaching out and maintaining that connection and then getting them connected. Um, so, you know, I really think that currently, of course, um, you know, I'm sure more could be done and um, perhaps Councilwoman Thomas, if you have suggestions for the school district, I'd be happy to pass those along. Um, but they're definitely working hard to figure out how they get those resources directly to families. Um, and you know, the teachers are, are sharing those things with the social workers as well. So we're, we definitely have that as a, a high priority.
Yep. Now, I know I have a commute contact at Shawnee Mission as well as the USD two thirty-two, um, very familiar with them, um, but it's about developing that pool of people um, that can support those kids because many kids aren't even in school if they attend school regularly and they can be school age. So it's, it's really a, a very, very tough time and I know our state resources with regard to children's uh, Department for Children and Families, um, they're very concerned about becoming overwhelmed as um, this begins to roll back out and, and as a delayed impact, we may not even see some of this until August um, later this year. So it, it's a concern and I hope it's something that we can put to the forefront of our minds to care for those and, and really place a, a level of importance of those, of our citizens that are most vulnerable as well as our elderly.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public items. Item number one is to consider adopting resolution number nineteen oh nine, providing notice for a hearing to determine whether a structure at forty-eight twenty-two bond should be declared dangerous or unsafe. Property was significantly damaged by a fire on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. It has been posted as unfit for human habitation, ordered to be secured from unauthorized entrance. Chapter fifteen point two eight of the Shawnee Municipal Code describes the steps for the abatement of structures that are unfit for human habitation. Next step is to adopt resolutions providing notice of a hearing on June eighth, twenty twenty at seven PM to determine if the structure should be repaired, razed or demolished. Does anyone on the council have any questions? The recommended action is to consider adopting resolution number nineteen oh nine. I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item number two is to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting resolutions numbers nineteen ten and nineteen eleven, stating the city's intent to issue private activity revenue bonds, authorizing First Amendment and restated development agreement for Project Homeland and contract number twenty twenty zero two three, statement of intent with Johnson County wastewater related to necessary infrastructure. Lou Shawnee LLC intends to develop approximately two million square feet of warehouse distribution light manufacturing spaces across multiple buildings as part of the Project Homeland development at forty-third and K-seven highway. HLP Building One LLC is indicated is now ready to proceed with the first building in the master project with approximately two hundred and seventy thousand square feet. Public hearing, two resolutions and a statement of intent with Johnson County wastewater required. There are five recommended actions to consider. First, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing to consider granting a tax exemption for the first building in connection with Project Homeland.
So moved by Councilman Jenkins.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. We are now in a public hearing as required by law. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, is uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Mayor, there's, there's not and the city clerk did not receive any public comments via email or voicemail.
Thank you. Um, I'll now accept a motion to conclude the public hearing.
Councilman Jenkins, move to, move to conclude the public hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. The public hearing is closed. Next recommended action is to consider adopting resolution number nineteen ten, stating the city's intent to issue private activity revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed fifty million dollars for the first building in connection with Project Homeland. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Next recommended action is consider adopting resolution number nineteen eleven, authorizing the execution for the First Amendment and restated development agreement related to Project Homeland. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Final recommended action is consider approving contract number twenty twenty zero two three with Johnson County wastewater for a statement of intent related to the designing and building of a pumping station in Forsmain in connection with Project Homeland and authorizing the mayor to sign the final contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider contract numbers twenty twenty to twenty-four and twenty twenty to twenty-five, a right-of-way use agreement and a master license agreement with Selco Partnership, doing business with Verizon Wireless, also deployment within the city. Verizon Wireless is proposing to install distributed antenna systems on city-owned streetlights. A right-of-way use agreement and master license agreement are required to govern the use of the city's right-of-way and streetlight facility. There are two recommended actions to consider. The first recommended action to consider is approving contract number twenty twenty to zero two four, a right-of-way use agreement authorizing the mayor to sign the final contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Second recommended action is consider approving contract number twenty twenty zero two five, a master license agreement authorizing the mayor to sign the final contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous council items, miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly claims for April thirteenth, twenty twenty in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand five dollars and ninety-four cents. Is there any discussion from the council?
I've got one thing.
Councilmember Nappan.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to thank Don and uh, and Nolan for working. It appears that uh, the P-card purchases have been successfully unmasked now with the new system. I know that was a problem for a month or two there. Um, so just additional transparency I was glad to see. And with that, I just again, wanted to thank them for, for making sure we got that done.
Thank you. I will accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes. Miscellaneous council items, does anyone on the council have an item they would like to discuss? Councilmember Nappan?
No, I don't have one.
Okay, sorry, your hand's up.
From, from the left.
If there are no.
I will move to adjourn.
Okay. If there are no other items, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Perfect.
Motion's been made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay? Motion passes. We are adjourned.